All right, we'll call the meeting to order. This is a regular Wasika City Council meeting for October 4th, Tuesday, October 4th, 2011. Mary, would you take roll call, please?
Mayor Serp.
Here.
Councilmember Clemmons. Councilmember Johnson.
Present.
Councilmember Rose.
Here.
Councilmember Slugan.
Here.
Councilmember Coy.
Here.
Councilmember Christensen.
Here.
And now we'd ask you to join us in a moment of silent prayer, remembering the prayer and the pledge of allegiance to remove our hats. Please join us in the pledge of allegiance.
(inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
My mother used to tell me that you used to have, you had to take your hat off whenever you were inside a building. I'm not saying you have to do that.[64.22][64.22](laughter) I'm just saying at my house, that's what my mother said.[67.11][67.11](laughter) All right. We need approval of tonight's agenda with any corrections, deletions, additions?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion-
Councilmember Coy.
-to approve the agenda as presented.
We have a motion from Councilmember-
Second.
Coy, a second from Councilmember Rose. Any discussion on approval of the agenda? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Visitors, requests, and communications. Tonight, we're honored to have Mr. Dietz, the Wasika School Superintendent, and he is going to give a presentation to us tonight. And so the floor is yours, and welcome you and the folks you brought with you.
Thank you.
Nice to have you here.
Thanks for having me here tonight, too. If you can remember from the last time I was here, I had some toys to share with you. I have a little bit more to share with you today as well. So besides the inner right pad, which I've used a little bit the last time I was here, I'm actually going to show you another device today as we get to go with the presentation too, so. And I'll do my best to stay stable and right here because, again, I like to move, but I'll do my best to try to stay within this area. Again, thanks for having me here tonight. Really appreciate the opportunity to come here and talk to you about the next steps for our district as we look at the obstacles we face and also the great things that are going on. We are looking towards the future and determining how we basically take that next great step into what our future's going to look like. And want to talk about that piece overall, the value. The word of value is really big for us at this point as we talk about a referendum this year. And really sort of transcending that into not only just the value for our students, but the value for our community. So I'll talk a little bit about that today. I think when you look at basically the value of our schools, the question comes up again is where does that fit within the community? And tonight, my intentions are to talk a lot about the fact of, again, how does that sort of, the puzzle piece, fit into the next one to make that work for our community? So as you look at things, basically, we're going to talk about three different pieces tonight overall. The first one's going to be basically, what's the return on your investment at this point? I think that's something, again, we took a lot of time last year to talk about of what does it look like for our schools when it basically compares to people around us and what we offer for our community. I think, again, you'll be very pleased at the outcomes that we achieve on an annual basis. The second is what's the reality we live in? I'll talk a lot about that today, too, as times get tougher. And again, we're facing that globally across the board, not only in education, but also across our government systems, across our nation and world. What does that look like here in Wasika for us and how do we maneuver through that? And the last piece is talking about the future. Again, taking our best foot forward, what's that going to look like in the future for our district and how's it sort of intertwined with where the community's going as well? Rome was not built in a day. And how apropos is that? When I talk about our district's success, I want people to know that, again, it's not something that's just a flash in the pan, not something that happened basically in a couple of years or over the last couple of months. It's been something that's been systemically built over time. And that's, I think, the great piece of pride that we have in our community and our district is that, again, when you look at the services we provide for our community, whether it be in the school system or outside the school system, there's a lot of pride in the fact that we've built a really good infrastructure to make things work. And you know me well enough to know that when I come and speak, I'm always going to do it on the things that I think are really positive for us, and there's a lot to do. I could spend hours talking about that. But that's the favorite part of my job, is it's commenting and bragging about our staff and students and things they're doing. So I'm going to touch on four really quickly for you, and these are some things you've probably heard before, but there's some new data, so I want to share that with you as well. First of all, let's talk about accountability. Accountability is the world we live in, in education. And at this point, again, let me be really proud to tell you that we performed extremely well, again, on our state assessments. Sometimes, again, there's a lot of emphasis put into it because, again, the system we live in from the federal level is No Child Left Behind. It's all about test scores. But I'm really proud to say, again, we deliver a lot more than that, but when it comes to what we have to deliver, we do a really great job at that. Last year, I talked about our success not only in reading and math, but how we were growing in other areas as well. I'm going to highlight a couple of things for you today really quickly, so you can hear this. First of all, third grade students, 95% proficient in their reading scores. Let me tell you that, again, when you look at indicators for future success for students as they progress through high school and on to whatever their endeavors are going to be, that is a key statistic and a key area. Third grade success shows how students will perform down the road. So we're extremely pleased with that outcome. Also, an area that's sort of newer for us, we've been making ground every year, but we really took a jump really further this year, is our science scores. Fifth and eighth grade's science scores, in general, were double digits above the state average. I want to point out eighth grade really quick as well. Our eighth grade scores were in the top five districts in the entire state of Minnesota, five districts in the state. I hope you can acknowledge and see the fact that, again, when it comes to delivering the goods, these students do a great job of doing that, and our staff does a great job facilitating that process. Partnerships. I think working together makes us extremely strong as a community, and we've really tried to fortify that within our borders as well. There's two I'm going to point out, and there's many more to talk about. One piece you'll be seeing the next few months is sort of a list of all the partnerships we actually have within our district, which I think is really impressive. But I'm going to focus on two today. The first one's our partnership with the university level, MSU Mankato. They have been a tremendous partner for us since 1988, and they provide a lot of different services and also financial support to programs. One in particular this year is Avid, Advancement Via Individual Determination. It's a program that we've instituted at the ninth grade level, which MSU Mankato is supporting financially and also with in-kind services by bringing their students over who are teaching candidates to work with our kids in tutoring. It's a great program, and again, I'm going to send the invitation right now to you if you ever want to come and take a look at what that program's all about. I'd be more than happy to take it to the classroom and see the tenants of what makes Avid so strong. The second piece, too, which you probably saw a little bit pressed on the last couple of weeks, is our partnership with SHIP upfront with the garden, but now also SROCK and Smith. We were able to basically get a grant to go ahead and put a garden in place, which is a pretty unique opportunity for us in this area. You saw probably a few weeks ago that we actually harvested the garden at the junior high level. It was a great experience for kids to really get their hands dirty. And the next step for us, we were able to land a grant of $13,500 through Smith, in which we're going to be partnered with SROCK down the road to put a greenhouse in, in addition to what we have already. So we're going to take the curriculum from the junior high level incorporated with science, health, and PE, and then take it to the high school level down the road, in which we can also put the agricultural piece in there, and really offer a great experience for kids. It's about the hands-on, real-life experiences, what we're trying to get more and more to. And I think, again, these two partnerships sort of point that piece out that we're moving in a good direction. Here's a comment I first started. I had a couple of staff members, and my first was hired about a year ago, and said, "You know what, Brian? We are in the stone age for technology. We need to get up to the 21st century." I will tell you that our wall, our feet and toes are actually dipped in the waters of the 21st century at this point, and they're in four distinct areas. The first two are pretty simple that you see as you go through the classrooms, smartboards. And you can see a picture of a student using that and incorporate it in the curriculum. It's a piece that, again, we've really used to really engage student learning. It's had an awesome impact on that. We believe some of our successes with our test results this year is attributed to that piece. As well as student response systems. And just to give you a demo of that, I don't have one with me because it would take a lot to bring over here, and sometime I will. That'll be the next toy I bring for you guys. But if you take a look at a cellphone, it's a general cellphone. The devices we have are basically similar to this, where, again, you can go ahead and ask questions of students, and within about 10 seconds, get the responses and know exactly what they know, what concepts and standards they don't know, but more importantly, address those needs on the spot. We don't have to wait six weeks for a benchmark assessment or two weeks later for an assignment to be turned in. We know what we need to remediate, and we do it right away. That's the strength of our district is our resolve to make sure we get it right upfront and don't let kids suffer along the path. Here's my toy part of the presentation, the iPad. I want to talk about this piece because this is where I see things going overall. I have up there netbooks. We're actually piloting a netbook program a little bit at the high school. We're going to get that ready for implementation time in the winter, which we're going to bring some netbooks in and talk about how we can use that service to really expand the opportunities for our high school kids. In addition, this summer, had the opportunity to actually go to a training through Apple about iPads and the power you can use with iPad devices. And I thought, you know what? I went there and saw all the apps they had to use for kids and what that could basically open doors for with students that are English language learners, special education students, or even our mainstream regular ed students as well. So I thought, you know what? I know how proficient our kids are, generally speaking, talk to our staff members, and they're going to go ahead and say, "When it comes to technology, our kids are well far advanced than we are." So I have a daughter who went to kindergarten this year, and her teacher's right behind me, so this is good for her to see this as well. But one of the skills you have to basically master is also tracing for kindergarten. So it was something that, again, when I got this in July, brought it home and thought, "I'll download an app," which was free, and I gave it to her and I showed her, demoed it one time for her, and said, "You know what? Why don't you see if you can do this?" And within about 15 seconds, she took off and never asked me any more questions after that. So for example, and I probably won't do as good a job as she's going to have done on this, but I'll try. You basically are just following the numbers, the steps, the process of how to trace the number, and it gives you the letter sound, and then affirmation that you did an excellent job, which I was hoping to do tonight for you.[648.29][648.29](laughter) This is where education's going. Bar none, this is really what education's going to be about in the future, is really the technology piece, and we're trying to tie those experiences in for students so they're prepared as they transition from our school to their professions afterwards. The other piece I want you to be aware of is the fact that, again, we went through strategic planning for the first time ever, looking at how we're going to look in the future as well. And that was really important for us because we never had a plan before, and this really defined our next steps as a district. And we did it in five categories, which I'll just briefly tell you. Business partnerships, how do we work within our community to really make things happen? The hub, how do we look down the road? How do we maximize our facilities that exist and become more efficient, how we offer services for kids? District-wide PTO, which I'm really proud about, we actually now have four PTOS across our districts, where every site's represented, has parent involvement in it. Marketing and communications, you've probably seen that if you go downtown, look at some of the businesses, you'll see that slogan, "Think Blue, Achieve Gold." That's really the gem we came up with to talk about how we're going to move forward in the future. And program planning, looking at what we have and how we're going to basically maximize our programs to offer things for our students. But, there's a big but to the process. Here's the reality we live in at this point. Last five years, $5.3 million worth of cuts. It's been an arduous process for us, and again, I hate to tell you, there's more to come at this point as well. We still have $500,000 to do this year. So by the time we hit six years, we'll be close to $6 million in reductions. What does that look like? You'll see a lot more information coming forward the next couple of weeks for the first-class mailer, but let me just give you sort of a snapshot of a couple of things program-wise. Programs have been devastating, especially at the secondary level. Our high school kids have lost a lot of their electives, our junior high kids. The reality we see for them is that some of them have two study halls at this point during the day, and we know that's an ineffective way to educate our kids. You also see raised class sizes. You see our averages above the regional average at this point. We're up five to seven kids in some of our classrooms at this point, which when it gets down to it, we did a comp before it came in here, 41 staff members we've lost during this process. That's 41 less people we can get to for kids. When you get classroom sizes, and we do have some sizes up to 39 kids this year, there's just not enough hands to get to the kids anymore. And that's a piece that we know has taken away value from our program. Raising fees across the board, services being compromised, we're at a point in which, again, we call it the tipping point, we're in jeopardy. We have had a lot of great systems that define our district that we know we do well with, but we know we're at a point right now, we cannot deliver on the same promise we have in the past because there's just less people to help that process out. And it's not because of lack of effort, I want to make that real clear. We're never going to be the person or the group that's going to say, "Oh, we just can't get it done anymore." Our staff works hard, they're committed to the fact of doing that. We're just worried about the fact there's just not enough people to produce that product anymore. One piece that we've tried to do to start this process, to say, "You know what? We can't go much more into staff and programs, that's all we have left," is look at building consolidations. And that's something we made a decision on basically back in August, saying, "You know what? In order to basically preserve some of the things that we think are important for our kids, we need to basically look at different ways to be more efficient." One way in which we did that was consolidating buildings. Next year, 1213 year, we're going from four academic buildings to three. And Southside Building, which is right across the street here, will be closed at that point. Couple of things I want us to tie to that. Number one, just so that we can get some of the misnomers out there. If we pass a referendum, Brian, will this all come back? No. We're going to become more efficient and really make this work, so this is a done deal at this point. We're not looking back, we're moving forward. Second piece is people have said, "You know what? Boys, 712 in the high school. Do you have enough room? Am I going to see seventh graders and twelfth graders holding hands down the hallway, walking down, having fun together?" No. We do have enough room. We're going to maximize every square inch of that building we possibly can. Not going to tell you there's going to be a lot of room left. It'll be tight, but we can make it work. We did have numbers back in the late 90s, early 2000s that reflected the numbers we'll have with this process. And second, no, we won't have common passing periods, no, we won't have common lunches. They'll have different schedules, and we'll make it work, so the separation's still there. But the biggest reason why we did this is to offer opportunities for our kids. We knew if we weren't able to maximize staff, that two-study hall scenario will start becoming more epidemic than just a flash in the pan for one year or so. I want you to know that's a big piece of us moving forward in the future, too. I mentioned this last year, I just want to reiterate so that you understand that, again, people talk about what's the investment overall for you outside of the school system? Because sometimes there's a belief that, again, everything that happens always is impacted within our four walls. Completely disagree. It goes beyond the four walls. Once again, one drop on the state of Minnesota based on the information we presented last year, $252,000 impact on our state payers. Also, for an entire class in one year, $3.8 billion with a B. It's really important to understand that piece, that this is a global issue that faces not only our district, but our community in general. Want to talk about some pieces of value that I think are really important just to highlight today as well. First and most importantly is how do we get people here to Wasika? One thing I'm going to talk to you about real quick is that, again, when you look at the factors that research has shown of why people come to communities, one of the greatest factors out there is also the educational system, that people will actually seek things out to see what type of school system do you have. And I'm going to focus on a couple of different things I think are really important. I'm going to read a little bit of this to you, just so you can hear this, but the first one is a quote I found that I thought was really apropos for this. "A good education is essential to setting up children to better handle the rest of their lives, so the importance of good schools cannot be overstated in a move to a community." One of the major factors in moving to communities and parents making that decision, people coming to relocate, is the school system. And we saw that firsthand at our PTO meetings this year. When I've gone to PTO meetings, I've had people come up saying, "Mr. Dietz, I moved here because I've heard about the school system, and I like the community in general." So we know it does factor in. The other two comments I saw in articles talked about the fact that, again, parents chose to live where the town was because of the school's reputation. And this one I can definitely relate to because I fell in the same situation. Move from California back to Midwest for better schools. That is my story. I was in California, I moved back, and wholeheartedly, I moved back for my kids. I wanted a better life and a better system for them, and I am so fortunate and blessed to be back here and have my kids get the education they're getting at this point. It's a top-notch education. Whose responsibility is it? We go back to that four-wall scenario. I'm here to tell you that, again, we need the village to raise a child. Everyone's got to be a part of that process, never been more important. And I like this comment that really reflects that piece as well. It says, "This is not just for district administrations, city officials, or parents of a school-aged children. It's a problem that impacts the entire community and one that will take all of us working together to solve." That is our dilemma as we move forward. How do we engage everyone to understand the importance of the fact that if we've got to get this on the right track, we have to have everyone involved, supporting it and moving it in the right direction? One formula for you from a math perspective, quality schools equals increased property values. Again, you take a look and look at any research that talks out there about how the impact of schools and good school districts have on the property value, and you'll see that, again, areas with exceptional schools tend to hold their market value better. One thing I want to also point out, too, is that there's also correlation between test scores and actually high property value as well. There was one that was highlighted in which they saw that in SAT scores, there was a correlation between high SAT scores and home values in a community. Want to point out that last year, ACT scores were actually above the state averages. So again, and if you saw from before, from our state test scores, we are in the top probably 3% to 7% in the state of Minnesota in performance in reading, math, and science. Additional support, and I will gloss through this really quick, I just tried to highlight a couple of big points. Realize that, again, you see differences in home prices of good school districts by about 10 to 828%, depending on the area you're in. That, again, one of our examples is DeDino, which has a banner school district, and that's in the state of Minnesota here. And they talk about the fact that they're seeing as much as a 48% increase in home value because of the type of school system they have in that community. And this one was really important, the National Association of Realtors. Of all local neighborhood amenities that can influence a buyer's decision to purchase a home, proximity to good-quality schools is the most influential. I think it speaks volumes to the fact of, again, how this all fits in together. Here's brass tax. What's it going to cost us? And I'll spend a little bit of time on that today, too. $12.25 a month for $100,000 assessed property tax value. That's for a residential and a business owner. If you're in the agriculture area, on one acre of land, you're assessed that same dollar amount, $12.25 a month, for basically one acre in which your house and garage reside upon. One big misnomer that comes up is that, obviously, on the ballot, you have to put down the dollar amount that's going to support in students, meaning that it's $700 per student. And some people always ask the question about, "Well, is that $700 mean I'm paying $700 in taxes?" No. That's the amount that's attributed to what we give per student for support through a referendum, $700 additional funding. So again, the only number you have to remember is that it's $12.25 per month on $100,000 assessed property tax value. Currently, we are one of 10% of districts in the state of Minnesota that do not have an operating referendum in place. There's 90% that do. And we've not had that for two years. And I hope that, again, as we've moved forward, that people have been able to see and acknowledge the fact that we are making the tough decisions. We're trying to find ways to basically bridge a gap and balance the budget, but that, again, we're at a point where we need some support to basically bridge that gap and help us get to where we need to go in the future as well. One thing I want to point out, too, is as you look at why we made the decision to go with 700, there's one big reason. Because we went from, I remember all the numbers here, 1150, 1300, 847, the second question for technology, and down to 700. And the question usually asked of me is that, "Well, why'd you do that? You just figuring out you have to ask for less money?" No, we've made adjustments, $5.3 million in five years. So we've basically figured out that we can be more efficient, and the $700 is what we basically need to basically move forward in the future. And what also it does is it gives us the most bang for our buck. It allows us to basically go ahead and offer a situation for our taxpayers that help because the state will contribute the most amount of money at $700 for taxpayers. I'm going to use my other device here just to illustrate this point. Here is basically sort of a graph that shows you what this looks like overall. Let me point out to you again, here's 610, here's 700, here's 847. You can see that, again, at 610, the state basically gives you $385,000, give or take. At 700, it's 439. And look at 847. It stays baseline at that point. That number does not change. So the reason we chose that number, too, is because at that point, looking at the information that we have, you're looking at a contribution of about 70% local and 30% from the state. You can see I need some tracing help as well, so I'll talk to Ms. Krueger after this. That's important to know because, again, we want to try to maximize a dollar amount so, again, we can give some opportunities to show our community that we are thinking a little bit beyond this. We want to help solve the problem and find a way that the state can contribute their part to this as well. So that was part of the intention of doing this process for us, is let's maximize every dollar we can and get the most investment back from what we can do with this process. So for your investment, the big question is always out there is what will this give me? I need to see brass tax dollars and cents, how it's going to be distributed out so I know basically for the investment I'm giving in my taxpayer dollars that what I give will be come back in this way, and I can see that piece. We acknowledge that piece. We have tried to be transparent in everything we've done, and this year, again, we've gone a step forward so we can ensure that, again, people can see how dollar-for-dollar we're going to spend the money. I will go over this rather quickly, there's a lot of information, but I need you to see this and know that, again, first-class mailers, in different media outlets, our website, which I'll get to at the end as well, you'll see all this information detailed and highlighted about how the money will be expensed. But I'm going to put it in three categories for you. And this is based off board priorities as well that were set back in the summer. The first one's technology. I've demoed some things for you in general, but let me go through really quickly and gloss through these. There's a few categories down here we think are really important. Wireless systems. We were able to garner a wireless system this year because we have an FCC license for free, a $25,000 investment that still needs some work to make it work overall. We know the future of our district goes to wireless technology. As we have pilots in netbooks and eventually in iPads and different devices, we have to open that portal so we can offer different experiences for our kids. Plus, we want to go to an online learning model as well. We know the university system is pretty much, again, going to that morphed version where, again, you're not going to the university, they're coming to you. And we want to take that same approach here in Wasika for our students and give them the opportunities they need. You look at the fact of, again, looking at the technology we have, we need to update those services so we can provide more of that for our students, so student-driven types of equipment that give them the real-world experiences that they'll see when they leave our doors. In addition, again, our cycle-replacing equipment right now is about 12 years or more. On average, really, for most schools, they look at about a six-year cycle to replace the equipment that they have in their buildings. We're far behind. We need to catch up a little bit, and that's an important piece for us to put into place to recalibrate and get back to that point. And then as well, just annual things that we can do overall to basically keep our systems up and running, whether it's servers, switches, different pieces of hardware that we need, we need to invest into our system. Let me point out really quick on this one, two of the items you see on there are one-time costs. We are trying to balance this by saying we can't have everything being ongoing costs or that, as we like to call it, costs that eat. We have to also try to balance it out, so, again, we make some long-term investments in our district that we know we just need to sustain and maintain as opposed to continually feed that over the time. Fiscal solvency is really huge. There are two major categories I want to go over real quick. The first one's the fact that, again, as we take a look at basically a need to basically[1488.11] meet the needs of what our auditor puts out there, as we've been shifting more and more money, and please realize over the last number of years, we've gone from formulas that give us 90% of the money upfront, 10% later, 70, 30 being last year, and now it's 60, 40. Just to put in the value of what actually happens here in Wasika School District, last year with a 70, 30 split, we had to borrow $3.8 million to cover cash flow, which we're paying interest on and basically paying back at the end of the year. This year when it went to 60, 40, $5.5 million. Again, this is not a woes Wasika piece, I will tell you that again, most districts are going through this process. Maybe not to the degree of money that we are, but again, when they don't have that piece of revenue to come help and support that, that's a piece that again, we want to try to get in place and know that we can have those dollars to make local decisions and support the programs we want to support within our district. The other piece too is again, as time goes on, and we all know this, the simple economics of life is that costs go up. So you look at utilities, you look at gas, you look at services, and we're assuming about a 2.5% increase. We want to start putting money aside so we can help cover those costs as well, so we can maintain the things we have and really make good investments in our future. The big one, programs and staff. This is the area that we've probably again, taken the most out of. And again, I'm gonna argue the fact that over the first four years of our cuts, we tried to stay as far away from this, 'cause the general rule of thumb for any probably leader is the fact that you stay away from the asset that's gonna affect your students the most. And we tried to do that, but this year there's nothing left for us to do, and even next year, that's really the only asset we have left is programs and staff. We want to take care of that in four different ways. First of all, again, to make sure that we're investing in money for our staff to give them the professional development and making sure that we stay competitive so we get the best people coming in here. That is why the district is strong. It's because the core is strong. And that's our strength, and when you look at other districts that come in and say, boy, you guys have a good system, it's easy to point to the fact of, well, look at our staff, they're the reasons why it's so good. Beyond that again, we've cut a lot of programs. We want to invest money back into our programs, and I put some on there from whether it be fax, industrial tech, ag, junior and senior high electives, music, art. We've taken a lot of value out and we want to bring that back. I want to be clear on this area though too. As history changes for us, we also acknowledge the fact that you just can't put things back because they were there before. We have to make good decisions with the money we have so that we're investing in programs that work for kids. If we bring a program back and it doesn't work and we'll evaluate it on a yearly basis, it's out. When we put something else in there that makes sense, because again, we can't afford to fail at this point. We've got to get it right for our students, so we want to evaluate, and we do this every year with the programs we have, to make sure we're making good investments. Another investment would be obviously to give other programs in place to basically help us support that next step for our district. And you can see that whether it be foreign language, college prep courses, technology-based support and courses. We know where we're going in the future, we know the support we're gonna need, we want to put that in place as well. The final piece is basically gonna be class sizes. When we're looking at again, a five to seven student increase in certain levels of our district beyond the regional level, we know we need to basically get back to that core premise where again, less students allows their teachers to customize the education process and support their learning. We know that research shows it's a good piece that we need to basically embrace, and we want to get back to that as well. The caveat obviously again, just like any other processes, is that realize this all goes before the board in the final process to make that determination, but let me point out again, these were the priorities they set up that talked about, these are the areas we want to focus on and invest in the future. With all that said, the question I leave you with is again, asking yourself, what do you value? And that's a general question, not just this group, but just in general. What do we value basically here in Wasika? The one comment that always sticks with me is a comment that I heard, and we had a state superintendent of schools out in California, who would always make this comment, every time I heard him speak, every time he'd come and talk to me, this was a comment he always spoke of. He said, "The greatest investment you can make is an investment in public education, an investment in our youth." I so believe that. Because again, when you think about the things we talked about today and where we're going as a district and as a community and as society in general, this is the avenue for success down the road. And we want to invest in that, find the value that we need for our students and really bring back what our promise is for our youth, which is a great education and give them opportunities to open doors down the road for them. And what I hope from this whole process is a few things tonight. Number one, that you had a chance to hear the information, that you continue to look at information that's out there. I'll give you one website that there's a lot of information on, from podcasts to prezies to different information and links. It's the number 12, 1-2, the word four, F-O-R, the number six, six, dot com. That's the website that has a lot of information on there. You're also gonna see a lot of information come out in the first-class mail, which will be out sometime near the middle of October, which is chock full of the things I presented today. There'll be sort of word for word from that perspective, and also what we've lost over the last five years as a reminder to say, you know what, we have taken a lot of cuts, and we hope that people acknowledge the fact that we're trying to make good decisions for our kids. And that more importantly again, I think the one piece that we acknowledge is that last year, and I'll end with this, we had 5,000 contacts we made last year in our community, whether through walking, phone banking, or presentations. And yet, that wasn't enough. We came as close we've ever had before, 200 votes from passing the referendum. We understand that I can't get to every door in every place. But what we hope for is again, that people hear the message and know what we've done over the last year and a couple months and say, you know what, I've heard Brian speak. I know what they're doing and I believe in that. And that we can have the mouthpieces of other people go out and say, you know what, it's time, we need to take care of our kids, we need to pay this forward and get this process done. That's something I would ask of the group to consider and talk about, is that you get to your social circles and the people that you know, that you really share the information, the resources, and say, go to the resources and make an informed decision. I think that's part of the process that I want to get to at the end and taking questions is that, as I've answered questions throughout this process the last couple months, it's been a great opportunity for me because there is some really good questions out there that we need to answer, and there's also some really information out there that's not accurate. And it's been able to allow us to come back and say, you know what, I know this is what you believe, but this is actually reality and let me show it to you. And that's been a good process for us to try to clarify some of those misnomers that sometimes people say, you know what, that's what I believe, but this is actually what the reality is. I want to thank you. Um, you know, we talked obviously this spring about the fact, I had the one slide about the water tower and about the gesture that makes and about the feeling that our staff had, and I think our students had, when you can look up and see that piece of how the community embraces what we do here as a district. It is greatly appreciated. And also, I want to thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight and talk to you, and I'd be more than happy to answer any questions you have at this point.
All right. Thank you, Brian. Questions, council? Councilmember Talugan?
I'll start off with a comment, and then I am gonna follow it up with a question. I was a teacher here in the schools. Uh, I was educated for 38 years before I retired finally. The one thing I know, I found out because I had the opportunity over the many years to travel to a number of other school districts and watch what other, what happened in other districts as their educational systems sometimes faltered. And the general ba- principle that you can come up with on all of that is that as the school districts faltered, the communities tended to falter right along with them. Those schools that were strong tended to be in towns that were strong and getting stronger. So the schools have a direct impact on the strength of the community, the economic development in the community, the number of people moving into the community, it's all tied together. So we are at that, as you say, tipping point where we might find ourselves in a situation where our schools are struggling too much, which will have a net negative effect on us as a community. And that has been bothersome to me as I've watched these cuts over the last number of years. Now the question, um, it's coming from some of the legislators lately that have been putting stuff in the papers and, and I've struggled with some of their comments, but maybe you're gonna have to talk about it eventually anyway. Uh, there was some improvement in what the state gave the school systems this last year in a legislative session. They're suggesting that it was more than enough to cover every possible need. Most of us in the education or are close to it know better, but maybe you can respond to that and let people know how it impacts us.
Absolutely. There was an increase in the biennium for the next two years of $50 per pupil unit to the formula. And let me couch that by also saying too, that when that comment came out about the increase, um, the direct comment made from the governor's office was, the increase is maintained and in there so that when students have to borrow, or sorry, schools have to borrow more money, they can help cover the costs of the interest rates they'll be paying. And that's the crux of the answer. The example I gave you of 3.8 million last year to 5.5 million this year, as we borrow more money, we're paying more interest, so the money that we get from the $50 per pupil increase is expended in the interest we're paying at this point and the cost of living things that we have not seen in a few years. So that money is basically a wash, and if, at best, we are thinking that at some point too, we'll probably be behind a little bit, that it won't cover all the costs that are gonna be incurred, whether from the borrowing of money or the increases we see on annual basis.
Anyone else? I guess I'll go then. Um, I understand what councilmember Talugan was saying about how a community is somewhat judged on its school district. A school district I would expect is somewhat judged on the community as well. And what I've noticed in the last couple years for sure, and I've been here for 20, it was 25 years last month, I came here and went to school, went to the school district immediately to find out about the schools. I was impressed with Wasika schools and that's why I came here. Um, what I've seen in the last couple years is the difference in the students. With all the adversity that we have going on in this community and the school district and the state, the country, these kids that we have in this community are still positive, they're still out there doing it, they're smiling walking around town, they're smiling out the school, they're happy, and that's important. That's important for them, it's important for the community. There's a lot of hope. I have and this council has a lot of hope for the school district and for the kids. They're wonderful. And, um, that's a huge reflection on our community, so if nothing else, we need to do it for our students, for the youth, the ones that are coming and the ones that are going, so, um, we're behind you 100% on this. Good job and, and you've been working very hard. Uh, you and your board and your staff, um, the kids, everyone's working very hard to make this successful. I just don't know how we could fail when we're all working so hard. Okay? Anyone else?
May I just make a quick comment, Mayor?
Absolutely.
Um, I was picking up my babysitter today and driving her over, and I explained what was on the agenda, so she would have an idea how long she would be babysitting tonight. And I told her you were on, and she said, will you support the referendum? And I said, you know, yes, I've always supported the referendum, but even if I hadn't, when she asked me to support it, that was huge. I don't think I could have told her no. So, uh, you've got lots of students out there, and, uh, she's a good example.
Appreciate that.
Mm-hmm.
Do you young people understand all that? Do you know how important it is, the impact that you have out in the community, just by walking around and smiling and being happy and doing the best you can with all the things that you're carrying every day? It's so important that you're walking around the community and smiling and, and just enjoying life, okay? So keep doing that. Very, very, very important. Anyone else?
If I may.
Councilmember Coy?
Mr. Dietz, I'd also like to share with you, I mean, I can count four of us up here who are products of Wasika schools. And, uh, many of us, um, have either moved back to the community to raise our children or never left the community because we believed it was a great place to raise our children. Um, I have faith that our community will come through once again for our children, and I can't think of a better place to live.
Councilmember Clemmons?
Yeah, Superintendent Dietz, I think that some, it's really important for people watching the show, as we like to call it, 'cause a lot of people in town watch these meetings, which I've never figured out, 'cause, uh, I wouldn't.
It's you, John.
It's, it's, uh, it's, I mean, Wednesday night, if you're watching this, you could be missing Modern Family or something, 'cause it's on Wednesday. But hav- having said that, we've, we've as a council have, uh, spoken more than once amongst ourselves that we understand there's a bigger picture than just the school district or the city, and there's a county, and there's three taxing entities that, you know, will, um, people get, when they get their tax statement though, it's the, people get it and the last thing they go is whoever raised their taxes last, that's who's doing it. And people seem to forget that because the referendum expired two years ago, people's taxes went down. So now if we're talking the $12 a month or, uh, for a $100,000 house, it's, you know, more than that for a lot of people, they seem to forget that two years ago, it went down almost proportionately the same. So it's not like we're asking people to pay this $200 and $300 per household again because they haven't been paying it. And the city council is very aware of, uh, the whole community, and we have battled and our staff has paid the price for not raising taxes in five years, basically. This group has held a line in five years. The school district has lowered their tax in five years. So everybody out there needs to understand, when I see in the paper that a different taxing entity, not anybody here, is looking at a 14% increase, it pains me to see that. And hopefully, everyone can come to grips that we're all in this together. And having said that, my next piece would be, I don't know, Brian, if you can help me understand this, because the legislators basically give or take away to cities and the school, you would think, I would think there's enough people in the whole state that would rise up and only elect legislators and reps and senators and people like that that would fund the school, at least to the, what they mandate. So I don't understand why every school district in the state is struggling in their own little community, but I think if we all rose up together and told the legislators, you know what, your system is flawed, your system actually stinks of how you fund schools and, and cities. And, and only put people in there that understand that, so maybe this is a good start, but next November is time to put people in to support schools. I'm done.
Thank you. Councilmember Clemmons? Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Dietz, thank you very much, and thank you to the staff, and thanks you young folks for being here as well. Thank you very much.
Thanks for having us, I appreciate it.
Anything you'd like us to do? Spread the word, I suppose.
Spread the word. I think the biggest piece I'd ask of you is again, just be a mouthpiece. We, again, we realize, acknowledge the fact, we cannot get to all 9,000-plus people in the community, we're gonna make our best effort to do in that, but sometimes just that factor of you knowing someone and having a rapport and relationship with them is just enough to say, you know what, I've heard the information, let me give you the other side of the coin. So being a mouthpiece or champion of our cause would be just wonderful.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right, now at this time, I'm to ask, that we're still with visitors' request communications, anyone else that's in attendance that is not on the agenda that would like to address the council, now would be the time to do that? Anyone with anything that they'd like to address the council with, now would be your opportunity? Anyone? All right, we'll move on. Tonight we have a public hearing, one public hearing, and it's amending the tax abatement policy. It will be resolution number 11-48. City manager?
Ms. Johnson has prepared a staff report for you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council and the public. The request before you this evening is being brought forward at the recommendation of the Wasika Economic Development Authority. At the March 5th, 2011 joint work session between the city council and Economic Development Authority, the city council asked the Economic Development Authority to review the city of Wasika tax abatement investment policy and make recommendations for updates. The EDA did this review, and they, um, looked at, um, policies from other communities and Wasika County, and ultimately found that the existing policy is a good policy and that it really only needed some minor modifications and some clarifications. And some of the language within the proposed, uh, policy this evening is being changed to be more consistent with language in the Wasika Coni policy. Essentially, the changes to the policy focus on, um, four areas. One is organization of the document, and it is organized into three distinct sections, project qualification, abatement term, and additional policy provisions. The second, uh, focus of changes is in the project qualification section, and, um, this section includes the statutory benefits that must be revi- re- derived, excuse me, from an abatement project. The section also includes relocated statements related to consideration of a project for abatement, such as equal consideration for both new and expansion businesses. Uh, the position on retail and service businesses, which is being amended to take a more affirmative tone, as well as project impacts. Uh, section two is the abatement's term section, and it's being modified to eliminate the first criteria, which was the statutory benefit section, and this, as indicated previously, has been moved to, um, the project qualifications section. Um, it also to further clarify some of the criteria and to qualify the range of points for job creation. Um, also too, the abatement term is being adjusted from 10 years, which is what is in the policy document that we've been using, um, to 15 years, which is actually the term that was adoption, adopted in a 2004 policy amendment. So it's just, um, making that consistent with what the policy should be. And then, um, section three, the additional policy provisions, clarifies that the application fee is non-refundable. It adds a provision that the council may authorize a longer term as provided in statute, and qualified expenditures now include building construction. The Wasika Economic Development Authority is recommending that the city council hold a public hearing and adopt the policy as revised, and is recommended, um, that the council adopt resolution number 11-48, a resolution of the city of Wasika, Wasika City Council approving amendments to the tax abatement investment policy. And with that, I will turn it back to the council.
All right. Thank you, Kim. Uh, council, any questions of staff with regard to 11-48? All right, we'll open the public hearing then, Mary.
It's 7:45.
And I'll ask if there's anyone in attendance that would like to address the council with regard to this policy. Anyone? Anyone? You have to ask three times, it's the rule.
They're all jumping up and down.
Seeing and hearing no one, then we'll close the public hearing. Mary?
7:46.
Thank you, Mary. And, uh, I'll ask for a motion from the council.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion adopting resolution number 11-48, and a second, a motion from councilmember Christensen?
No.
A motion from councilmember Johnson, a second from councilmember Christensen. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Onto routine business on resolution number 11-51, approving lawful gambling premises permit for Slane Cutter Festival, and, um, the establishment is, I had it here.
Barden's Bar.
Yes, thank you. All right, council?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from councilmember Clemmons, a second from councilmember Rose approving resolution 11-51, which will approve the lawful gambling premises permit for Slane Cutter Festival Association at Barden's. Any discussion?
Just a quick question.
Yes.
Was this a renewal or is this a new permit?
It's a ren- it's a new?
This is a new site.
This is a new site for this group here? Okay.
All right. Any other questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Unfinished business tonight, we have none. New business, final payment for 2011 Seal Coat Project, number 2011-05, and I believe we have a map at our desks on this one. City manager?
Yes. Uh, staff is recommending city council approval for the final payment, um, for the city project 2011-05. The project was completed and staff has indicated that the project is ready for final payment and acceptance. The total cost of the project is $42,246.26, which is slightly less than the original contract. Um, we used, uh, less quantities than, uh, asphalt. Um, so, staff is recommending to approve the change order, um, which reduces the amount of the contract and make a final payment, uh, to Caldwell Asphalt, and then also to accept the work for municipal project 1105.
All right, any questions of staff, council? All right, could we have a motion to approve?
Make a motion, Mr. Mayor, to approve the, uh, change order, first time a change order, a reduction change order.
All right.
And the approval of the final payment.
On the 2011 Seal Coat Project, number 2011-05. We have a motion from councilmember Rose.
Second.
A second from Councilmember Tolugan. Any questions, comments on the resolution or on the adoption? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion carries. Onto the consent agenda. What are your wishes, council?
I have one question, if we could do that first.
Feel free.
Before we make a motion.
Absolutely.
We have a budget amendment that's included in the consent agenda for a front-end loader. I don't have a particular problem with that at all, but we're basically moving it up from 2012 to 2011, so what will be the impact on 2012, since we're paying for it all in 2011?
Well, we'll spend the equivalent of $140,000 less next year.
That's what I wanted to know.
I did, you know, we did talk about whether to put this under new business or consent. The regulations are changing in 2012, so it's advantageous for us to buy the model this year rather than next year, and we have put a lot of miles on it, you know. We've exceeded, we've put more hours than recommended, and the maintenance is continuing to get higher and higher. This is the machine that we push, the asphalt zipper. So staff came to talk to me, they're being very proactive, and this should save us money long-term.
All right.
Move approval of the consent agenda then.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Tolugan. Do we have a second? Second from Councilmember Coy. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. City manager, report. City manager?
Just a few things. The 2010 census numbers are in, and according to the census figures, between 2000 and 2010, the population within the city of Wasika has decreased by 2.14%. We lost about 201 people.
Mr. Hanson might ask you about that tomorrow. What was it again, city manager?
The population decreased by 2.14%, or 201 people. Here's a great one for students. The city is looking for volunteers. The annual buckthorn removal is scheduled for Saturday, October 15, at Maplewood Park. If you're interested in volunteering, you can meet at the lodge at Maplewood for coffee and donuts around 9:15. The park director does ask that you dress for weather and bring gloves. And then, leaf burning. Councilmember Clemmons contacted staff, wanted us to provide some information on leaf burning. As you are aware, city ordinance allows open burning of leaves from October 15 through November 15 with a number of restrictions, and residents can find the restrictions and the information online at ci.wasika.mn.us. But in speaking to the fire chief today, the Wasika County is under a burning ban, and our ordinance does allow the fire chief to prohibit burning of leaves when conditions make burning hazardous. So I just want to remind people that if you are interested in burning leaves, please either contact City Hall or check our website, because the chief may actually prohibit the burning of leaves unless the weather changed, because it's just so dry. So those are the three things I had to talk about this evening. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, city manager. Any questions of the city manager? All right, moving on. We are at commission reports. The airport board meeting, there are detailed minutes in your packet. There was discussion about the application of the farm products on the airport land. The Skydivers Association were guests at the board meeting. Construction is winding down and submitted for, by the engineer, for state approval of the fuel tank replacement out to the airport. There's been talk about private hangars, and some of it has been discussed here, and the 2012 pancake breakfast was discussed. I don't know how that discussion went, but the VFW is interested in sponsoring this and possibly including two youth groups in a joint sponsorship, and Bill Johnson, WP, is going to coordinate that. Next, we have the EDA, and that's Councilmember Coy and Christensen.
Mr. Christensen.
Yep. No, I wasn't here last month, so I will take it, since I was under the weather.
Thank you.
We talked about the tax abatement policy that we reviewed and approved tonight. We had a marketplace inquiry that was being discussed, and the exciting news that we received, I think, a few days before our meeting, was the approval of the USDA IRP loan that we received, and that is intermediary relending program. It's a loan that can be used with matching funds that are being donated from the county, WDC, and a private family, being used to help businesses, agriculture, get moving forward. So that was an exciting news that we received. The other item, county economic development, we had a meeting here last week, actually, and had some of the different players throughout Wasika County, different cities involved, and I think discussion came out of that meeting of coming back to our different boards and seeing what we felt about that. We also reviewed some of revolving load funds, policy considerations on our fund history, kind of just going through what we have available. And there was one discussion about industrial park cleanup. We're looking at some different ideas and kind of discussing things and just seeing if any funds would be available for that. And we also talked about the school greenhouse, which you guys saw at the presentation for Mr. Dietz tonight, just some ideas and things going on. Anything else you want to add?
Other than that, the USDA loan fund project that we were awarded grant, a loan, is in the tune of a half million dollars.
Correct. Yes. And that was it.
Thank you, Councilmember Christensen. Thank you, Councilmember Coy. Fire Relief Association, Councilmember Johnson.
I was unable to attend that meeting, Your Honor. I'm going to give you guys a quick explanation here, though. I've missed the last several, and I think I owe it to you guys and my constituents. We've been doing something a little different at the Club for Work I've been having to work Wednesday nights. I've recently hired someone to work the last Wednesday night of each month for me to make sure that I can start meeting some of these obligations here, so starting next meeting, I should have everything in place, but I have nothing for you tonight.
Councilmember Johnson works at the American Legion, and he does a great deal of work in the community supporting the American Legion, so that is honorable in itself, Councilmember Johnson, so thank you. And that happens sometimes that you can't make these.
That happens. I feel bad when I don't make it, but...
Sure. All right. Heritage Preservation Commission, Councilmember Tolugan.
Oh, at our last meeting, the major part of the meeting was spent talking about the historic property survey that we are involved with. We have grant funding to take care of most of that now, but we agreed to, we approved a letter of agreement to begin that process, and then we spent the major part of the meeting talking with Tom Zahn and Bethany Gladhill, or the people we'll be working with as consultants, and basically having a good, long discussion about what areas we're going to cover, what their criteria were going to be, what we could do to help them through the process, what kinds of research we can do locally to help them move forward. At this point, they've spent four days in town, going up and down the streets and cataloging on paper with photographs, all of this stuff.
I was going to say, were they the folks who were taking pictures of different buildings and homes in the community? There were people who noticed that that was happening.
Yes, they were, and I passed them one day on my bike, and we stopped and had a discussion while we were walking and doing that, yes, but in the part of northeast from Elm to Fourth Avenue Northeast, and then from Elm to the railroad tracks, and then the downtown area, and then there's a little section here in the southwest that they're going to be looking at. So we've had that long discussion, and it was a very good discussion, and I think it was helpful that we all kind of figured out what they were looking at and what kind of information we could provide them without, save them some time and energy, too. We also talked about the legacy grant that we had for the band show, and that the final reports are now done and sent. We talked about the band show, Bandstand Sign, which you saw at one of our last meetings, and we had a kind of an update and discussion about the designation process, which the city council now has kicked in a motion again by sending it off and back through the planning commission, and it'll come back around to us again. So that was our meeting.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Tolugan, and we might as well go right to you on the planning commission.
Planning commission, we had a public hearing on the Woodville, what was it called? Woodville Estates Flat, which we also acted on already. We also had a brief discussion about conditional use permit for the Real Life Covenant Church, and that was tabled, because there seems to be a number of questions that are, have not been resolved yet, and until they're resolved, they won't be moving forward with that. And we also worked on the comp land again, and we were discussing land use and transportation.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Tolugan. The Community Ed Advisory Board, Councilmember Johnson.
Was unable to make that meeting.
All right. Very good. Joint Government, Councilmember Christensen.
We did not have a meeting in September, and so we'll be ready to go in October.
All right. Library Board, Councilmember Tolugan.
Library Board did not meet.
All right. Region nine, Councilmember Coy.
There is nothing to report.
All right.
We only meet quarterly.
All right. Very good. And tonight, I have nothing for the Tourism and Visitors Bureau. So that takes us down to announcements. Councilmember Johnson, anything?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Thank you, Councilmember Johnson. Councilmember Clemmons?
Nothing.
Yes, there is, Councilmember Clemmons. The flowers came down. If you didn't notice or not, for you folks at home, the flowers came down Sunday afternoon. Okay? And we're looking forward to having them next year. Any reports, Councilmember Clemmons?
Actually, the mayor and I officially declared fall here, because we took the flowers down, so as of Sunday night, it's officially fall.
There you go. Councilmember, thank you, Councilmember Clemmons. Councilmember Coy?
I've been asked to remind council and the community of the health clinic that is going to be held at the United Methodist Church this Friday and Saturday.
Very good.
Of which we had a presentation on at our last meeting, but there's flyers all around town, so if there's any questions, people need to call the Methodist Church.
Absolutely. Don't, try not to forget that, because it is going to be a very good service, very beneficial for folks that's at the Methodist Church. Was it, was noon the time? What time do you remember?
I don't have the flyer in front of me.
Call City Hall, and we'll have that information for you, but it's Friday and Saturday, correct?
Friday and Saturday.
Okay. Very good. I'll come down and help you answer the phones, Mary. Thank you, Councilmember Coy. Councilmember Rose?
Just one thing, this coming Thursday is the employee appreciation lunch that we're going to cook for our employees at the city. I believe the time is from 1:00 to 12:00.
No.
No, from 12:00 to 1:30. Had that backwards. I'm going to try and be down there about 10:30 Thursday morning, so for you cooks that are going to do the barbecuing, 10:30 would be a good time to show up. The grill will be there and be firing it up. Have a great time. Lot of food.
All right.
That's all.
If you don't see me there when you think you should, give me a call on my cellphone. I'll bet I'll be on my way. 10:30, 11 o'clock, you figure, huh?
Yes. We should be there at least an hour before the employees show up.
All right. And what are we making?
We're making pork loin, which is on sale at Hy-Vee this week.
Yes, it is. $2 a pound.
Yes.
Pretty good.
They'll have them sliced up for us. We're going to have chicken legs, drumsticks.
Potato salad?
Potato salad, hot beans, cut fruit, water. I think staff was making brownies. And what else we having? Chicken breasts.
Okay.
About equal amount of all three, so we should have, they can pick out, and we can pick out.
All right. Now, just so that the taxpayers don't think that they're paying for this, you want to tell everybody who's paying for it?
The bill stops here.
That's right.
The seven of us are paying for this. Yes.
Very good. Because there may be discussion about the taxpayer.
I think there was last year, but I said a couple of them straight, yeah, we paid for that ourselves.
Very good.
I think we only get paid for watering the flowers, isn't that right?
That was a good one, Larry.
Yeah, it was pretty good, wasn't it?
Inside joke.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Rose. Thank you, Councilmember Johnson. Councilmember Christensen?
Ah, nothing tonight.
Thank you, Councilmember Christensen. Councilmember Tolugan?
Nothing tonight.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you all. And anything further, city manager?
Yes, sir.
I'd ask for a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion from Councilmember Clemmons, second from Councilmember Tolugan to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No one ever does. We're adjourned.
And thank all those students for showing up. That's great.